Okay, so this open the this special meeting, the purpose of it is to. Pull up all the hearing on proposed moratorium. Backing commercial cryptocurrency mining operations data processing centers. The best solution introducing the proposed local law. Localize this and just scroll through it so it shows on the recording. Say for eighteen months. Purpose of it is. So beginning. The application as of the planning department rule.
Microsoft. HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot microsoft dot com slash and dash.
I'm telling us what you're doing.
It's reading a website, but I'm trying to get to the town.
But. Okay, so I mean, that's this is the resolution, that's the law. Um, and now just open is for public comment there and I'll just after the people who are here. I'll show the two written comments or receive. And if anyone else wants to say before do we do it, then I'll say definitely as well. But we have to keep it up to fifteen minutes regardless, and I know there's some people on Zoom. But first of all, I'll go start with the folks who are here. So can anybody?
Hi.
Yes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Joe Asmalski, I live at twenty one eighty Dryden Road. Um, we found out about this because we got something in the mail for a ZBA hearing. Uh, that had to do with. A company that is applying for cryptocurrency mining. In the building next door to us. My concern is obviously we don't want crypto, I mean, we we know what it's all about. Um, the the noise that the computers make are terribly annoying. Um, our concern though. Is that they're asking for a interpretation of the design of the committee. And we're wondering, you know, obviously it says they were denied because it doesn't fit the zoning. But we're worried that they're going to claim. Because in the zoning, it says something about being a service. And we're worried that they're going to claim that it fits the zoning as a service. Um, that that's mine Sarah's concern, we we are. Want want no part of a, uh, you know, the the building next to us has given us problems for years and years and years, you know, the building very well. Um, and and we would, we we would welcome, uh, something that we that we would. Could be appreciative, even even when the the cannabis. Guy wanted to to buy into that, we were all for that, we would have been happy to have done. But obviously, the building has, the building has tons of other issues besides. Um, uh, the the issues that are that are reported us today. Um. So. That's that's our major concern is that, uh, and and the ZBA meeting to me is. Uh, they they know why they would turn down, but obviously probably for their lawyers want want to get something on record. Um. So, you know, we're all for a moratorium, but obviously we're for a law being passed as soon as as soon as you guys can get it in the works. Um, to pass a law that just bans it. Now, uh, uh, we also understand that the state is 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 looking into more regulation on. This type of business also, but you know, we still feel that any layers that you guys can put in would certainly help us. Want to say anything, huh?
Yeah, I just, the whole idea of the Bitcoin mining seems to go against the fabric of driving. We've put in solar farms, we have heat pump requirements, we've got electric cars. And it just doesn't seem right that some company is going to come in and suck away all our green energy and, you know, leave us back at square one, basically. I mean, you know, I I think that the town has made great strides in moving forward and getting away from fossil fuels, but. The amount of energy and right now in New York cryptocurrency has to use the green energy, so what does that leave us? The 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 natural gas and. You know, oil and fossil fuels. So I just don't think it it's a fit with the town.
That's cool, thank you.
I want to know what happens after eighteen months.
Well, so he's our.
He's, I I'm, uh, those I've been met, uh, Mark.
What's your name, son?
Sir, Mark Spinner, I'm, uh.
Are you the town attorney?
I am tonight, I'm filling in for Nate Van Leeuwen.
Okay.
So. Uh, and I talked to Nate today about this and he filled me in on on everything here, um. The moratorium. At the end of the more, the moratorium, the purpose is for the town to. This is a relatively new type of business.
Right.
That's being proposed. Here, and the purpose of the moratorium is for the town to. In whatever fashion they deem appropriate by committee and otherwise to study the specific type of land use and determine what type of regulations. Or. Uh, what type of local laws are necessary to. To regulate this type of business, so during that eighteen months, the town works, they study, they. You know, bring in whoever they want as experts to discuss this particular issue and. Amend their zoning code or any other low, any of other of their their codes to. Regulate this particular type of use or or they decide it's fine and they can go forward, it's really. A period of time where we put a pause on everything so that the town can investigate this and take the appropriate action. And make sure that this type of use is in the. You know, it won't have a negative impact on the residents of the town, so it's kind of a. A working period, I guess, for public.
So, so, um, are there any regulations in the town for levels of noise?
We do have a commercial noise ordinance here.
A a moratorium though wouldn't prevent. A company from still taking legal action against the town as they so wish, right?
Well, it would have to be. Their their theory on legal action would have to be that the town in passing a moratorium. Did this in an arbitrary and capricious manner. Which. Would be a heavy lift.
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, because again, the law gives the town the right to. You know, home rule law, they municipal home rule, they have the right to. Establish the zoning code, say what uses and businesses are allowed in what particular zones and. You're looking at your zoning code as well.
Yeah.
For a rewrite, so it's it's a proper purview of the town to. To investigate this, to make sure that this is something that is in the town's interest, and if it is. How do we regulate it to make sure that it's done in a reasonable and proper manner, so it's not to affect. Town residents, town infrastructure, your energy supply, all of that. So that's. That's the, uh. That's the argument for putting in a moratorium is just say, hold on, because if you didn't do that, um. You get these applications coming in, you have to determine them and they, you know, these businesses come in and then all of a sudden, okay, we want to. You know, regulate these, you have all these grandfather. Right companies in. Whereas the moratorium is, uh, it just puts a, it it's not a ban, it's a freeze so that the town can address it appropriately.
Okay, the other question I have, and maybe for Jason would be. Are you going to delineate between commercial crypto mining and personal crypto mining? Or a person is doing it in their basement?
But there's a person near us.
There's a person near us, we can hear the noise, we we know the noise.
And if I lived next door, I would be very upset, we're far enough away where it's kind of background.
We can hear it, someone's doing it. It runs constantly, it's it's a low, annoying.
Home.
Home, yeah, yeah. Um, and that's from the fans that run the computers.
Somebody over George.
That was somewhere.
It's not real close to us, but I can hear it, it took me a long time to figure out what it was, but it would go and go and go. Recently, it's been more erratic, so. But it it is.
Cause people do do it.
Yeah, I know people do a person.
If the noise is really horrendous.
Noise is the worst, they use fans for their cooling.
I mean, and this is from somebody that lives on Route thirteen.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I I'm used to noise, but this is a constant level of. It it never stops where a car goes by, you know, and and it kind of just breaks up. But this this just goes.
Yeah, that, how would we?
Well, I I this.
Be a potential zoning violation. To be investigated?
It depends on what what's the property zoned at.
Yeah.
What district is it in?
Well, we're in residential.
Residential ag.
They're in residential.
I think rural residential.
Where I think it's actually located, it's a residential. It did.
Yeah, I mean, I. Well, I guess it would depend on if it's a commercial enterprise or not, and.
It doesn't sound like, it sounds like someone's doing it personally, that's what it sounds like, but I.
There is fifty eight DBA at length, your code is fifty eight DBA.
Yeah. One fifty eight DBA.
That's the decimal.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, we don't live close enough to it where I feel like I have a right to file a complaint, but if I was next door to it, it would be.
Annoying.
Annoying.
Yeah.
So I guess it's sort of the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's really the noise ordinance is why, yeah, is the essential factor in that one.
I think we would define it in a few ways, right now, it's not defined in our zoning, we we have, this, the reason why you update your zoning law every few years. I mean, ten or twenty years, and we're way behind in this. Is to keep up with changing industry, this is an industry that really started maybe eight years ago in New York. And so it's it's appropriate that we update our zoning law and take into account new things that are occurring that weren't defined in our prior zoning. So I feel like we're on on ground in that regard, because we're doing what a responsible government would do, update our zoning to accommodate changing industry. And this is a new industry, doesn't have a place in our zoning, and if it's not defined, it shouldn't uh occur in a town. I know there's this argument that this is serve, it fits in that little crevice of a service. Uh, industry, but um, I think that's a, that's a tough sell.
Well, it's it's certainly not a traditional, you know, service business.
And if this is allowed in our zoning at the end of this process, when we are done. It would probably require a special use permit in certain places, and we would allow it.
I should also point out that New York is considering a. A moratorium as well.
When New York has one that's lifting this year.
Is it lifting?
At the end of this year, and it was a two year moratorium.
Okay.
Um, and that had to do with crypto mining that are affiliated with former fossil fuel.
Right.
Electricity plant, so that that was a bit of a carve out, this this is a different industry in our concern, my concern is not so much the noise, I know that can be done quietly now. It's the, uh. Burden on the grid. And we have housing developments that are being held up because of their impact on electricity use and how much we can actually support. So one of my concerns and what I want some analysis done is how much power would this thing use, how much should we tolerate? Should that be defined in our zoning, when we get there?
And that's the purpose of moratorium, we're discussing too.
Sorry, so do you have another comment?
Yes.
For a comment?
Yeah, so I probably probably in the most important comment here to receive. My name is John Bordelini, I own that new property, this is my son, my oldest son, his name is John Bordelini. Um, I'm here to address any questions, I'm here to help clarify things. I actually consider myself an expert on your zoning law now, I read a lot of things and I learned a lot of things, uh, I would like to speak to town attorney or to stand in at least. I thought we got here earlier, I apologize, you traveled four hours to get here, I thought we might have had a few minutes. But since you are standing, I'm going to probably ask to reserve that right maybe till, uh, the regular town attorney gets here. Um. But anyway, I am your neighbor.
He's not gonna be here tonight, so.
I understand, I, well, that's okay, because. I have a lot to offer, as evidence as well. Uh, I will be submitting some evidence, some case law, some very relevant stuff. I am your neighbor, I'm sorry we have to meet this way, I didn't wave hello to you guys one day, I.
But you went the other way.
We we get so many people.
I know, I know, I know, I I apologize.
Yeah.
But I. So I'm sorry we're meeting this way, and I promise, I promise to you, I will be a good neighbor to you, as I am to where I am now. I promise we will get over this. I promise. Okay? And that's all I can say until I prove differently. I walked in late, I apologized, I I'm not like that, it was the distance. I heard a concern, and I'm here to address your concerns, but I am here to talk about this law, because there are some very, very big problems with this law. You said the noise, I resolved the noise with the zoning, I explained there is no noise. I hate noise, I hate loud cars, I hate loud trucks. I live on a busy road where I live, two, six, seven, and Route six. My first ten years there, I called my local police department every three nights and had an officer come over. And chase kids with loud cars, I had them stop drag racing, I am that guy, I promise you. I've stopped now, once in a while they fire back up, I know who to call, and they go talk to the kids' parents and it's done, I'm that guy. There's no noise for my facility, there's no pollution, we're not going to burn any gasoline, your wife is one hundred percent right, it sucks a lot of power. It eats power. I'm not here to talk about crypto, I wouldn't fight for it, I have no passion for crypto, I'm in business, crypto is a means to deter, uh, to build a data center, that's what the goal is. But the crypto will generate the money, so it has to be part of that data center. Uh, I hate that building, it is an eyesore, it is embarrassing, I apologize.
No, it's, no, you don't have to.
I do apologize, I'm embarrassed to own it, and I have to be honest with you, we were not allowed to turn the power on. Uh, by the building authority, they were not very nice to me, I. And I'm here to explain that too, they did not treat me very nice. Uh, and and I understand, but not letting someone turn the power on, period. I mean, we have a Ryobi lawnmower and a Ryobi weed rack that we use at our beach house, we have a beach house in Long Island. That's why we're coming to do, we can't even use that here, so we have this this place, this ugly place, it's an ugly beddy we call it right now. It needs to be redone, it's horrible. They wouldn't let me clean it out, they wouldn't let me turn the electricity on. And they were on very nicely with me, and I'm here to straighten that out, uh.
Who wouldn't let you turn it on?
Uh, the building inspector, Shelley Knigbaugh, she would not let me turn it on.
Okay, that's none of my business.
Yeah, that's not like, that's not.
Well, okay.
Here, though.
Well, everything here about that building is our business, it's my business, it's your business, because I'm your neighbor, I pay taxes here. And I don't want us to waste money. Okay, so I apologize right now, and I promise when I get in there, which I will get in there, and I will make it all work, and I will make everything better, you will be very happy, you're like, that guy is not a liar, he's a standard fellow. And unfortunately, he's dealing with some crypto, I hate it, but. But it won't bother you, and you're right about the other neighbor, if he's disturbing you at night, and if it's over fifty eight decibel, you can make a complaint, and I'm an expert in your zoning law. All right, so I'm here tonight to talk about the law, I'm here to meet everyone, I'm here to maybe. I don't know, dispel some notions, that I'm not some big crypto company. Uh, I'm a landscaping company for thirty eight years. With a great reputation, great clients for twenty to thirty years, they'll verify that. But I'm also an expert on your zoning law, and I've become an expert on, uh. On moratoriums. And I have a case. From Binghamton about twelve years ago. And it says you can't do that tonight. Now, I'm here to ask the board members. And I don't know who the board members are, I'm sorry for that, uh, I imagine you are, you take a lead.
Supervisor.
Oh, okay, sir, pleasure?
Stan Bachman, though.
Pleasure?
And Deputy Simmons.
Pleasure, okay, so we have.
Leo.
Yeah.
Boris Mendez.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh. So. I need to know. What the exact reasons are why we need to initialize. A moratorium, is there a, is legal criteria you must meet to enforce and start a moratorium, you just can't do it.
What is the theory of the case you mentioned from Binghamton?
Spells out. The the three-prong test on why you can have a moratorium, and you you can have that here.
We discussed the reason for the moratorium, I I probably before you walked in.
Well, I apologize, but we need, I need to know.
It's a new business, it's in, the town has not received an application for a data center before. And it's something, and you mentioned yourself. The degree of power it takes, I looked at your website, you indicate. The the per kilowatt price you're getting for.
Yep.
Power.
Yep.
Which suggests to me that the only reason that you would put something on that there like that, no other businesses do that, indicates that you use a significant amount of power.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
You're correct about that, but you have no say over that.
That's not.
Well, not for, not for the purposes of this, you don't, you don't.
Well, we're.
No, we will find out, yes, we will, whether it's with seventy eight or federal lawsuit. Which which will cost each of us.
I know you want to intimidate us, it's not going to work.
No, 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 what I'm doing is I'm meeting equal force.
I'm right here.
Yes, you are.
Don't shout.
Yeah, so the point of the.
Don't call me insult, I'm Italian, please, that's not chanting.
That's cute.
It's not cute, it's it's.
Anthony. Yes, sir.
My meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
So are you going to comment on the proposed law, or are we going to, because that's what we're here for.
Yes, we are.
Typically, just so you know, we limit comments to three to four minutes per person, because there's other people in this meeting too, it's not just you and your son.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So you have three criteria by which you have to meet a standard, and that standard is strict, you just can't impose a moratorium. Because you don't like, my company uses power, because it's a new business, I haven't heard any valid reasons from you. Why you have the the strength to impose a moratorium right now?
Local governments have the authority to regulate land use within their jurisdictions. That's the authority.
Civil home rule.
Correct, there is a home rule. But. Not to do that. The home rule does not just allow you to impose a moratorium, you have to meet criteria, so I'm going to ask. To read you. A little bit of law from Binghamton. That caused the moratorium to be thrown out. He's in three criteria. In response to a dire necessity. What is the dire necessity right now?
Enough power.
To promote the health, safety and welfare of the community.
That's a promotion, that's great, we should always start to do that. But dire has a specific meaning, dire means an immediate danger.
You're talking about the police power version. The theory behind the moratorium, not the land use version behind the moratorium.
No, I'm actually telling you, police power is a little different in that respect as well, that's to immediately stop something. So the second criteria is to reasonably calculate it to alleviate or prevent the crisis condition, what would be the crisis condition?
I think that's the point of studying this.
Um, I I have an answer for that, the crisis condition is we don't have enough power in this town to support your business. Dan Lam just was telling us that we have developments that are on hold because we lack electricity.
And those developments need a permit to be built, correct? All right, I don't need a permit. I don't have a right, and we'll get to that here, if you'd like. I don't have a right, I don't need a permit. Anyone else?
You're a good neighbor, all right, just like you said.
I'm a reasonable neighbor, you know, and and for forty years, I see what you guys have been doing, I mean.
So what's the, what's the next?
Here's the next criteria that you're standing. That the municipality is presently taking steps to rectify the problem. What have you been doing to rectify your electrical problem?
Adding solar.
That's nice, that's good, I agree, I want to add solar too, I actually want to do commercially when I get here.
Um.
Well, for a period of time, we were the leading town in the entire state.
That's actually good.
For solar generation, and we're working with our power company, the NICE, you've heard of that.
Yep.
To improve the the strength of the grid in this area, because it has to be upgraded.
It does.
So there's a long term plan to upgrade the grid, because we have more solar farms coming along.
That's good.
So that's actually in the process, so good question.
I'm good, I'm good with that too, I support that, and I support wind, but there's a problem with the caps, um, and that's true.
Well, it's currently in the midst of reviewing and updating or something, that is, that is active.
And this, that's an appropriate reason as well, so.
So. What steps have you been taking regarding crypto prevention from? Let's say Lake Ti- Tonga Wanda, I believe, they're the big ones right now, not North Tonga Wanda, thank you. They had horrible Frankenstein noise and pollution, correct? I think. There was an issue close to here, Bratton, that had a dam. That they were generating up to a hundred kilowatts of their own power. And it was very economical for the for the neighborhood, and then the miners moved in, sucked up all their power, and then there was, when there was a demand. Like at night up here, I think it gets cold and there's a lot of electric. All the neighbors had to pay a very high rate of electricity. And it jacked their even those up, that's a big problem. But this is years, New York State, they wanted to ban crypto. People wanted it, Democrats wanted it, we know who wants what. By the way, just for the record. Up until Trump, I voted Democrat my whole life, let's just get that out of the way right now.
Why do we need to get?
I told the name of the.
Get that out of the way, because, because, because we are, we are.
This is a governing module, it's not.
Right, that's right. And I want you guys to really understand that, okay, so Kathy Hochul tried to ban. Kat, Kathy.
Okay, so hang on, let's focus on the comments to this proposed moratorium, please, I don't, we don't need to get into gubernatorial or national politics. It's completely not relevant to what we're doing here.
It shouldn't be.
And there are other people, like I said, who want to come, who who seem to be waiting to comment. And I'm going to move on to them unless you get to focus real quick.
I have been focusing, this is a very complex matter that you have not touched upon until John Bordelini bought that building. So I cannot do what I have to do in three to four minutes right now, if that's what you're trying to make me do. This has to be worked out and hashed out, I put that in right into you guys. And three to four minutes is not going to do it, you're not going to solve this problem by quieting me down right now, if you don't give me an opportunity to present stuff right now, you're going to get one more charge on first amendment. Violations, that's how that works. I'm not getting taken off track, everyone else here spoke to other issues, I'm speaking to all the complex issues as they relate.
So proceed to focus on the moratorium, please.
But then I appreciate if you don't interrupt, go forward.
Right, so we talk. If you're, if you're not going to allow other people, there are other people who want to speak. And you're going to have to give them an opportunity too. And.
Oh, she was in the middle of her comment when you started.
She made two comments, I'm keeping track, but go ahead, let her speak, that's fine.
I was, I was wondering, like, during a moratorium, are there going to be additional public hearings about this issue?
Well, there would be, the town would take that time to, like, the attorney said, study the issue.
Mm-hmm.
And it would become part of our discussions during the zoning rewrite, which is already under those, that's already underway.
Now, if the town did decide to establish a committee, those committee meetings would be also public meetings as well.
Okay.
So that's where you can get into a lot of these specific issues and noise, power, everything else.
We have, we have. As our, our new zoning law, we have public meetings about that, different provisions of the zoning law, or where we think this type of industry should go, and at what level, what size.
I mean, there has never been an out, like, an app, an application with this, we haven't had this in the town before at all.
Right.
So that's why. You know, being, I mean, that answers your question right there.
Wait, on the, we learned on the first one. So on the first one, so we haven't discussed this at all, this is brand new.
Are we, are we done, are your questions answered?
Well, the one, the one other thing is, like, I know that you're looking into environmental and power levels, what about health effects? That would be part of the study. Is that part of the study? Is that part of the study?
Which doesn't include things like how the effects of. Steady levels of noise on people and things like that.
Okay.
Which, you know, some of this stuff was touched, I think, even brought up during. Fracking discussions, kind of think of it.
I expect our. We have a lot of questions as well.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like cell towers, it goes over fire departments, you know, because we know, we're, someone's commented about.
That's a good example.
Rodden burn, like, a good crypto facility burning and rotten, like how.
So there's dozens of towns across the state who put in solar. Farm moratoriums while they established.
Well, yeah, the short one.
It's a land use moratorium to allow the, the town to study it and make sure that the, their code is properly. Right. Regulating those items.
I think our fire departments, I also would need to know, like, is there additional tradies they need to have, or do they have equipment they need to have? In order to service the community with its changing industry.
But the reason Plattsburg put a moratorium in place was the increased demand on electricity and what it was doing to residential energy prices. And that spiked, and they had to do something about that, so the town of Plattsburg did that, we've already talked about North Tana Wanda. So what we're doing here is not inventing wheel, other towns have done this, to protect their residents, and that's one of our responsibilities.
And we don't have to wait until we have a problem in order to put in a moritorium, they can. Proactively address this, as they are doing tonight.
So getting those two. Towns you mentioned have significant noise problems, wasn't that the big problem?
Plattsburg, right about North Tana Wanda, the noise, the fans. But in Plattsburg, uh, the chief powers, Drew, the companies up there, that's the hydropower that's available. And the residents saw their energy bill spike. And the local politicians got a lot of pressure from the residents to do something about that, but you got a similar concern here. You know, the, the maintenance of our grid and the power on the grid. Among other. Not one resident has come out and said, we like the sound of this.
Of what?
Of this project, we had a number of residents approach us and tell us their concerns.
Where are they right now? I know, I, I have a letter here from the neighbor on one side, and I have the nice neighbors on the other side here right now. Where are all the other objections?
I don't know, there's at least two other people on the, on the call, who I don't know who they are, but maybe they wanna comment.
Yeah, I I did receive feedback from the, um, conservation board last night.
Yeah, and we've received emails, but we can't disclose those.
So you received private emails complaining, but you can't disclose those? No, why the public?
That's, it's a person, I mean, it's, we're protecting people's identity.
Oh. So public meetings can't protect identities?
We've had conversations, you wanna know every conversation like that too?
I didn't know we protect identities, I didn't realize we had risks involved here. I thought public meetings were specifically meant for this.
This isn't a public meeting, I can have a conversation with somebody.
So are you saying you're submitting complaints via hearsay? I don't know what's going on right now.
Making a complaint, we're having a conversation, and you're trying to escalate it.
We're not having a conversation, we're having a public hearing.
This is a public hearing on.
Local law, not on project.
Right, not on the, this is not about the project, it's just in the local law. So going into details of what you might or might not build is not in front of this board, it's not in front of any board.
So.
It's not even the question you brought to Z B A. And the, the details of what you are proposing for your individual project are not about, that's not the law.
I under, I understand why we're here, I'm trying to determine, you got phone calls regarding the law? Is that what you're saying that you got phone calls concerning people? Because I heard you got, I don't know what I heard.
Determined to take this conversation place, we're not going.
No, no, I didn't bring it up, I'm looking for a clarification.
I said I've not heard one positive thing about this project, I've heard some negative.
My project, two one eight six. So you brought that up, sir. Mister Supervisor.
Yes.
I have to ask you, going forward, you're gonna have to take it easy on me. Because I am addressing what the town is bringing up here, and every time I make a comment, you seem to jump down my throat. And. That's not very nice, I've already explained to you in writing, that normal people are very intimidated by towns. Municipalities, officials. And what you're doing to me right now is very intimidating. And. I'm gonna ask you to stop that. Now, I'm not intimidated by you, I wanna be very clear.
I think I'm pretty tam right now.
I'm not trying, well, I'm not trying to, but I'm, I'm.
I, I read what you wrote, it was clearly meant to intimidate the town. Um, and that's nice, we did, I did hear, I did read what you wrote. Um, so can we just talk again? Explain, talk about the law, you've, you've laid out a couple of things, you said from this Bennington case. Our attorneys responded, we've been telling, talking about the reasons why we're. The individual board members right now have already given several reasons why. Moratorium, they believe, might be appropriate, we haven't voted on this yet, and there's still two other people on Zoom who might wanna comment as well. I don't know if they do, but they'll have an opportunity if they want it.
So you brought up the fact that you read what I wrote. And it's your opinion that I wrote that to intimidate you guys?
I don't know, when being an attorney myself, reading someone threatening article seventy-eight and. And, and also First Amendment claims. Um, I, but we don't, that's not.
Process.
Again, that's not about the.
Hold on a second, let's, this is, this is a public comment. Session, so why don't we, everybody? Allow him to finish his comments.
Yep.
Um, we could give him a reasonable amount of time to do so, and.
Yeah.
No more dialogue back and forth, we'll listen to his comments, consider them, move on to the other comments and.
So I've been giving other five minutes so we can get to the other people that want to.
So for the record, I was not aware that you're an attorney.
It's fine, it's not relevant though.
It is relevant, because you know better.
Back and forth, this is.
And you're doing it again. You're doing it again. I'm gonna ask you to stop doing that one more time, please. So, I just wanna be very clear, so when I do bring the action, because if this law passes tonight and signs. I'm bringing the two actions. In response to a dire necessity, please, is there a dire necessity? I'll take that as a no. Reasonably calculated to alleviate or prevent a crisis condition, what is the crisis? I'll take that as a no. That the municipality is presently taking steps to rectify the problem. I'll take that as a no. Because there is no problem. My project, which you've all referred to, all of you that have spoken have referred to the project. Well, not all of you, I apologize, man. Apologies. Have spoken to my project, I did not bring it up, it is a subject here, we know it, it caused this being to happen. You guys were not nice to me, you haven't let me turn on my power in the building, not at all, not even for like a, a coffee machine, nothing. You weren't nice to me. You're cheating on the zoning law. Sir, I forgot your name, but you said that you didn't know about the decibel levels in the zoning law?
He didn't say.
He didn't say that, because, because they're asking very much about the noise and stuff in the zoning code.
We don't have a noise ordinance in the town of Dryden, in some of the industrial areas, there isn't noise ordinance, and that was what was told to you.
Sir, you do have a noise code in the town of Dryden, and it's an excellent one, so, let's talk about it. You guys have a wonderful constitution here, you do, I agree. You have a noise code, it protects everyone. My voice right now, because of my culture, is loud. I'm probably speaking at peaks between sixty-eight and seventy decibels. This nice polite lady over here, she probably speaks at fifty-five to fifty-eight. If she's asked to speak up, she might hit sixty. Your residential property is protected at night from seven P M to seven A M to fifty-eight decibel. That worrying, you're hearing, which I do not agree with, you shouldn't hear that. Is probably probably only fifty-five, you can download in that to your phone. And you can determine what that decibel level is, your right is to stand on your property line with a decibel meter. And determine how much noise is coming over your property line. The code is very clear, it is wonderful. That's the first part. I like to make. This case part of the record right now, however you wanna take note of, I could rip the first page off so you have it, so you could put it in a minute.
Whatever you wanna say.
To me, to me, I will share it.
Thank you. Uh, would you look, I could do that, is that how you prefer to do it? Did you? Alright, alright, so I will submit, uh, Vestal Gas Coalition versus the city of Bennington tomorrow. I really think this is what I have to submit to you guys, um, this law cannot be passed, it cannot be signed tonight, I'm gonna also ask that the town. Before they get the opportunity to put a memorandum of law together, why it will be acting illegally in passing this memorandum right now. This moratorium, apologies.
Like I said, you can submit whatever you feel.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from the people online?
Yeah, are there any comments from folks from Zoom?
Michael Gill, he's got his hand up, doesn't he?
Michael Gill, yeah, and just let unmute yourself and. Michael, did you unmute or?
He said something.
I heard something for a moment. Oh, he doesn't have any comment. And then someone, V forty.
V forty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He said he didn't have any comments. Is anybody else on, anyone on Zoom?
So land.
Yeah, I think Lauren's just, oh, just listening in, I hope, he's our deputy clerk.
It's Lauren.
Oh, there he is.
I'll, I'll just make one comment, uh, both my partner and I, I'm speaking as a, uh, resident of, of Dryden. Three sixty-three Ed Hill Road, um. For, for transparency, I think I'm also the de- deputy town clerk and former town board member. Um, but my opinion of the, uh, my partner and I both strongly believe, um, that, uh. A, a study of, uh. Of, of cryptocurrency data mining should be, uh. Employed, um, this is a big problem in central New York, upstate New York. And, and Mr. Bartolini, I am from Peekskill, um, and there is a, a reason why I moved to Dryden from Westchester. Um, but again, this is a, a, is a general study of, uh, the impact that. Um. Uh, cryptocurrency data mining operations can have on a rural site, uh, on a rural town, um, heavily invested in tradition. Um, and I, I would encourage the town board to, uh, pass this. Local law, uh, this, this for, for a moratorium, uh, Mr. Bartolini, this is not project specific. Um, so this is a general study of, of, of what is to come. Um, and, and Dry- Dryden has made a reputation, uh, stood, and sta- has stand, stood up against fracking, fracking operations. Um, and this is the next fracking operation, um. So that's my opinion, um. Do with what, do with it what you may.
May I ask you something?
Thank you, yeah.
Um, I would just like to say, the good of everyone here, and I. If my voice is too quiet, you let me know, because I, I, I did theater, so I can work on my projection. But, um. I am not informed enough. At this point in time. About cryptocurrency or, or these services, but I, I do believe, in all sincerity. That the reason I'm here in this role is to represent the people in the community, and that includes you as, as an owner. But I also wanna be clear that, um. I, I, Dryden is not an anti-business community. Listen to my words before you go there. And that part of our due diligence in things like zoning. Is to help ensure that we set people up for success as well. Because I would much rather help ensure that our zoning is in place. For when businesses do go in for long-term success, I'm not blowing smoke.
I know you're not, I.
I mean it.
I, 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 I believe you.
Business or a large business, people invest their time, their money, their dreams to get businesses started. And, um, part of doing it responsibly is make sure that the services that the town's providing. As well as the people who live here, um, that, that we do things right for a long-term sustainable. Operations, business, environment, um, all sides of it, so I'm not blowing smoke, I mean, and, um. We need to be smart and thoughtful as we move forward, I think it's a longer-term payoff. I just wanna share that.
I believe you. Um. Here today, I own a business. Um, my escape is, I'm an honest business, honest hard-working business, many years, very verified. Um, does any, who here owns a business, not a law firm? I, I mean, like a service, you do.
Not service business, but I have a.
Do you mind, I'm just curious, I, I.
I raise horses.
That's hard work, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's nice, uh, does anyone else, what, did anyone's father own a business that helps too? I, I just wanna get a feel for this.
My husband's a self-employed builder.
Good, okay, it's honorable.
My mom owned a business, not my.
What kind of business, I, I'm just trying to get a, I want, I really wanna.
I mean, you can mention.
You're watching me again, aren't you? Uh, you're doing it again.
This is not a comment on the law, I guess if you wanna talk to everybody afterwards, I think that's fine.
But when that, when that man up there, Jason Lifer, is, am I pronouncing that right? You're Jason Lifer, I'm sorry, who was that man, I, I, I.
Lauren.
Lauren?
Lauren.
Lauren, alright, when Lauren was discussing things like fracking. We're here tonight because of me. So I'm sorry.
You know.
Oh, I, I got us here tonight, I got us here tonight.
I wanna be very, my personal opinion.
Yes.
Is. You might be, um, your, your business might be the first thing. To initiate the conversations. But this is a fairly new type of business that is growing across the planet. And you, you might be the first one, but it's not because of you, we need to do the right thing long-term. Whether it's you or anyone.
You do, and your constitution, I wanna repeat, because I keep getting interrupted. It's a wonderful constitution, your code, it provides noise restrictions that are unbeatable. They cannot be beat, and that's good for the neighbors, I can't beat it, I wouldn't try. Your zoning is proper, it's too broad, it needs to be narrow.
I think, I think this, you know, um, we allow already over eight minutes for comments from this particular resident.
Are you done, are you done? Okay, you've just, you've just violated, okay, at this point, we're gonna be leaving. Because you're trying to silence. Me, and I'm kinda done now, you have been rude, not letting us turn our power on. You have not let me speak, and every time we get to a point that someone else break, brings up, and I have to comment.
Who has spoken for over twenty minutes.
If this passes tonight, you will be getting a federal lawsuit in a seventy-eight in no time, if you'd like to talk to me. You're welcome to call me, so you're a standard, yes, sir.
Can I just say something?
You can.
I've had my battle with the town, and whenever I battle the town, I'm sorry, but. I only got three minutes, that's, that's what they always gave me, and I understand you wanna go longer than that, but when I battled the town. I only got three minutes, and I battled the towns hard, but still, when I spoke at their meetings, I only got three minutes. I'm sorry, that's what they give. I don't know what to say.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Yep. Good night.
What we seeing?
I would too. Alright, well, seeing that we don't have any further public comment. Um, I'll close the public hearing and then now the board. And discuss this, um, let's discuss, so anybody wanna start, Dan?
Well, I don't adhere to his arguments again.
Well, I don't adhere to his arguments against this. I, I see this as a, an action that is. With precedence and, and. Both North Tonawata and Plasberg and, and the reading and research I did leading into this made me think it was a, a simple procedural thing that our town should do. Uh, given, in particular, our zoning update that's underway right now. If we were not doing that, I wouldn't feel like we were on this firm ground. But you probably know better than me whether that really plays into this, but it's, it's my sense that that gives us a justification.
The best analogy to this question is. Every town around here, when they got that first solar farm application. And they saw the extent of it and the potential impacts of what that would do. They put in a solar moratorium, so they could study it, and then they go through during the moratorium. They have committees, they study it, they develop a solar energy systems law, they regulate non-commercial versus commercial.
And we did all of them.
Right, right. I'm not telling you anything that you haven't, that's the analogy, analogy to this particular, he. His claim is that it's a targeted moratorium on him. And, uh, I'll read this case, but my, there's two kinds of moratoriums. There's the. Emergency moratorium, and there's the land use moratorium. The police power moratorium is to. Put a freeze on a pending issue. This land use moratorium is to. Proactively address. A certain type of land use so that it does not become an issue in the future. That's what this is. And.
It's a land use moratorium.
It is, it's a.
But he's trying to characterize.
Right.
As we did with solar, we, we then.
We do have the right to, um, you know, uh, to sort of focus on. Particularly because we are going to, uh, a revision, a potential revision of our, or update of our zoning law. To give us the time to look into this kind of new business, we don't, you know, I don't have enough understanding of what. You know, what will the impact?
This is not a novel thing we're doing here.
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask the lawyer something.
Sure.
If he, if he did file an Article seventy-eight, could he put a stay on the, the moratorium not being passed?
No.
No, okay.
Because.
I presume. I mean, it's gonna take him a long time to file an Article seventy-eight anyway.
Well, he only has four months to do it.
Right, right.
And I presume we're going to vote tonight on the moratorium, it'll be in place.
Well, that's another thing to take into consideration. If we were not to do this, and he could go forward with his variance request to the Z B A. And then he's cleared a threshold, which we would make this effort seem a little more capricious if he had already gotten approval of the Z B A.
It's not a variance request.
For an explanation on why he. What he was asking for is the, his application was turned down because, uh. It was not considered a permitted use. He's saying he's going to the Z B A, appealing that decision, saying, I have a service business.
Understand this, but.
So.
My point is the Z B A couldn't approve that. We don't know.
Well, they would have to, to, to say like, his specific. Well, depends on the questioning, actually. Then they'd have to interpret whatever the question is, it's, it's a service business, that would be normal.
Right, well, what they would have to do is look at the zoning code, look at this specific business and see if it's the type. Of business of the nature of the service businesses that aren't permitted uses. And say yes or no. If they say no, it's remedy is under seventy-eight. So if they say yes. Then you won't be able to permit because if the moratorium passes tonight, so it's kind of one, you know, it's.
But this really isn't about him. This is really about what's the right long-term. Needs for our communities.
That's correct.
So.
For all of the residents.
Industries out there that want to come to upstate New York for whatever reason.
And, and one of the main reasons we need to do this zoning rewrite because technology is changing so fast.
Well, the thing is. Their reading of this is he is saying that the town is targeting him through this whole.
That's what, that's what he, he was all, you're exactly, is precisely because.
Yeah.
You took these as our way to stop, stop.
Right, I mean, the, the problem is, is like that because they're, right, the, the, the power, you know, often, and they, like, don't just pretend he. Set up and then other people come, or other companies come. Or if our grid can't handle. Can only handle a certain amount. For one, which we have to work with nicely on and stuff, just, just for their housing. And also for the other solar projects.
Well, the most important thing is whatever, the story is that is, there is a potential for many impacts. The, 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 the immediate one is the question of.
It's a huge one.
You know, but, you know, but, but that is one, but we are also hearing what happened, uh, you know, with, uh. Issues of fire services if it has an impact, we don't know. So the question is, is for me, this give us an opportunity. To have a time to sort of learn much more than we don't know. About the consequences of bringing this kind of, you know, this kind of business into town. And I have a reasonable regulation that provide for the well-being of most of our residents. That's what, in my view, you know, uh, is what we are doing this for.
Right, and the le- the legal test in an Article seventy-eight is whether the town board's action, in this case, passing this moratorium. Was not arbitrary and capricious, meaning there was a good faith valid reason for it, which I think we've all said in one form or another.
And even he said, um, this is a very complex issue. I think, or his words exactly. And. And, and that right there, it's, it's not just about him. This is a complex issue. That we need to make sure we take care of and understand. I mean, there may be things about it, we. We don't even know to ask until we study that. I, I really believe we need time to make sure we do right by the whole community, including him.
And. You know, I don't know what the end result will be from a lit law standpoint at the end of the moratorium, but. The idea that somebody can walk in with an application for. A service business permit and just walk out without any type of.
Review.
Review for something that draws this much power, that makes this much noise.
Do you have, I, I didn't see the number for power. What, what, how much power does it draw? Five, do we ever get that?
No, he didn't.
It's these things, it can go up to ten, maybe eleven, fifteen, that's all.
Yeah, well, he hit the, the website that. Was found, talked about a price per kilo hour that, the rea- the reason why they list the prices is because. The, so, so that people can figure out the, um, cost it takes to mine, mine whatever coin that they're doing it.
Right.
Right, so and at some point, that's why, you know, you would have heard. One of those, there were like ones shutting down saying China, I remember reading about, because the cost of electricity got so high. That it became unprofitable to do the mine.
Right.
Like min- mining of whatever they're doing.
Well, it's not just the, it's not just that. I mean, this also includes like huge server farm. You know. It's not just whether it's bit crypto mining, it can also be the date, just huge data centers. Which needs to be part of the study, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, because the, it, it really is the power, because the power draw, because.
Yeah.
They, that, like, if we chewed up the amount available on the grid. Other businesses couldn't even come here that we might want.
And that's.
Our crisis is affordable housing.
You have a comprehensive plan. That encourages certain types of development. If something like this. You know. Towards areas of your comprehensive plan, it needs to be with that, with this kind of action.
Well, that's our gut feel, you know, gut reason of being here, you know, it, it, it's, it's. Incongruent with the mission that we set up for this town. It's not saying, well, we never thought of this, well, we, we didn't, so we need some time to think.
Can I make a, a quick comment? Um, I think we also need to consider A I data farms, not just crypto. Because it's common.
They draw, yeah, they draw a lot of power.
They do.
Kind of thing is a lot of, a lot of the companies would do this, though. Yeah, remote locations. Because there's, there's a lot of competition about power. It's not even, it's, that, that's the thing that they really need is that. Brought to them sometimes, so.
Yeah, our world is running on, on data. It's, it's, this is not because we biased against. Data, it's, this is, this is, we need to understand it, do it. Understands we do the right thing.
And this guy's gonna sue us and we're gonna be in court for the next nine months.
That'll be, well, if he does an Article seventy-eight, he's got to file it in four months, it'll be a relatively quick procedure.
Can I inject something into this? Uh, uh, this, this property this guy bought is next to useless. I mean, it is so small. My property line is fifteen feet from his building. He has no parking up front. The, they've, the state has said nobody can park up front. There's limited parking behind. I think there are a whole lot of other issues. If he was to go forward, he, there's a lot of other issues that are gonna block him. Because one side of the building, the side that my property is on, you can't drive a car between the building and my property line. It's fifteen feet. And then there's a water well that's stuck out in the middle of the parking lot. It, we're dealing with something, well, how much of an acre was it? It was like through three tent, not even that. It, it's microscopic. It has sixty feet of road from it.
These are all good points, but that's, that's a little too much about the project.
No, but I'm saying that, that, that it's, I'm, I'm, I question whether it could go forward even if we didn't have.
Right, but it's important that the, the moratorium is not about his project, it's about what's, what's.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that if he goes ahead with this zoning thing. It may just end up getting taken off the table, and then we can go, and then there may not be a lawsuit.
Well.
Because I don't think he has enough property to do what he wants to do.
Does he have customers? Customers come in?
Yeah.
It doesn't really matter.
No.
Well, it does if you don't have parking.
Yeah, well, again, we don't have enough, we don't.
I'm just saying. That this, this is such a small piece that I think we do need a law against this. But I think this guy really purchased the wrong spot.
File an application?
He, yeah, I, yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
He did file an application. Is that application online?
I don't know, should. Probably wouldn't be online, it's not part of this, but you can get it from Shelly or.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that application. Okay, thank you.
But then the.
Sorry, Henry.
But the other thing is like. That was part, I guess, if you want to get into all the details of what these things do, if they, depending on type of cooling that they actually use too. You know, we did a water, a study of the water resources, you know, if they decide to try to sink a well. Depending where you sink it, it could, how much water they draw, it could affect the neighbors.
So these are things we'd want.
These are all kinds of things they've studied, because you can put one in the wrong, like you can even find a vacant part of town with this, but if the water resource is available or not enough. It could affect everyone around. We also, you know, out near like, say, Caswell, there's that entire subdivision that happened where there's about fifty. Parcels for single-family homes that. I don't know if anyone's tried to build there yet, but they're all gonna be on well water too, and we don't, we don't have municipal water through ninety-eight percent of town.
So getting back, if we were to allow this, it would be a special use permit, we would consider each site.
Yes.
On all these points, so. Follow the question.
Yeah, so, um. So here's the resolution. So I'll move to the resolution.
Once the person remembers Monday.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thanks. And just. For the record, I think that's probably the longest we've ever given anybody to comment, I don't.
To bring the clock back out.
Um, so I'm gonna, I don't know. Your meeting will be adjourned.